I'd like to call to order the January meeting. Actually, it's the December meeting of the Board of Education because we didn't meet in December and we'll be meeting twice this month. So I'll call this meeting to order. I would ask you to join me in honor America as we stand for the pledge to the flag.
Attention, salute, flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in my nation, in my home, in my residence, in the Constitution of the Constitution.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Next is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean. Second is by Mr. Stevens. Any additions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Next, we move to special reports and presentations. First is some of the good news going on in our schools. Ms. Webb, we'll start with you.
We'll start with Oak Ridge High School. Once I make this where I can read. Oak Ridge High School students from Mu Alpha Theta have been competing in the Math Madness Competition sponsored by the Mathematical Association of America. Since fall break, the students have competed against other high schools from around the country in a weekly match. The team successfully made it to the Elite Eight in Division II A competition but lost a close match to the Hempfield Area School District 20 to 19. The team showed improvement week to week and recruited new teammates to join the competition. Mu Alpha Theta is looking forward to participating in the Spring Math Madness Competition. Oak Ridge High School Health Science Academy has 27 students who were certified in CPR. These students are clinical internship and medical therapeutics. Additionally, 14 clinical internship students tested for pharmacy tech certification over Christmas break. Dr. Christy Hudson's co-edited book Promoting Positive Learning Experiences in Middle School Education was a featured book at the World Education Leadership Symposium by IGI Global Publishers. Dr. Hudson also contributed a chapter in the book titled Missing Faces: Making the Case for Equitable Student Representation in Advanced Middle School Courses. Kendall Whitaker, Oak Ridge High School Spanish teacher, was awarded the Early Career Educator Grant by the ZETA Chapter of the Delta Capagama International Society of Women's Educators. Kendall will use the grant funds to purchase a subscription to Zambabazoo website dedicated to sharing cultural resources from the Spanish-speaking world. Using the website, Kendall's students will have a year's access to authentic material and information across the globe. That's from Oak Ridge High School.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
I have the pleasure of good news from Willowbrook. The Willowbrook Children's Student Senate has completed a budget and submitted for review the final order for our Calm Corner Project. They will also sponsor the Great Kindness Challenge in January. Willowbrook partnered with Tennessee Tech students for Fall into STEM Day in all K-4 classes. Students from Tennessee Tech Education Program created STEM lessons and the students had a wonderful Wednesday full of STEM. As second graders finished up a unit on paleontology, they had an opportunity to have a team's lesson with Dr. Stephanie Drumheller Horton, who is the professor in the Department of Earth and Planetary Science at University of Tennessee here in Knoxville. The students got to see various fossils, learned about the profession, and of course, asked lots of questions. Those are the great news. That's the great news from Willowbrook.
Thank you very much. Ms. McLean?
Okay, I have Robertsville. Two Robertsville art students have had their artwork accepted into the East Tennessee Regional Student Art Exhibit at the Knoxville Museum of Art. These students are seventh grader Ava Powell with her piece Memories of Mom and eighth grader Anaya Jones with her piece Old Toys. On November 20th, East Tennessee State Band and Orchestra Association held auditions for middle school students to participate in an honor band clinic on Friday, December 3rd, and Saturday, December 4th. We are pleased to share that eighth grader Charlie Toppenheim and Jacob Smith had successful auditions and will be participating in this clinic. Out of approximately 40 students across the area who auditioned on Saturday, Charlie placed in the silver band seventh chair and Jacob placed third chair in the bronze band. Finally, best of luck to Xavier Harper as he travels to Azerbaijan to compete in the World Age Groups for trampoline and tumbling. And that's just some of the good news from Robertsville.
Thank you. Dr. Renninger, did he not already do? He did and...
I believe he won a silver medal.
That's, yeah, that's what I thought.
If you could, if you could follow him, then we would be thrilled to hear about this.
They want to, all the world wants to hear about this.
Sorry, I got excited there for a second. But if you are able to follow Xavier's mom, or we did a retweet of the actual performance and competition, it is absolutely unreal to see him on the trampoline and what he's able to do and just unbelievable athleticism and just a, just a, in addition, is just an outstanding young man, a great family, and so we're just, we're super proud of him.
Absolutely, and I'm sure, I think I read in an article or maybe from your newsletter, his aspirations are a lot higher.
Absolutely, and I think he is more than capable.
Great, thank you. Ms. Agel?
From Glenwood, Glenwood students collected pennies for pajamas to provide pajamas for seniors at the Alexander House over the holidays. The pennies and various change were used for multiple STEM projects during the second nine weeks in all grade levels, then used for good in our community. Glenwood's first annual Santa drive-through was a hit. Families decorated their cars, donated food for Second Harvest Food Bank, and received gifts of a book and hot chocolate to kick off the holiday season. There were blowups, decorations, special characters, and a Glenwood-specific radio channel for cars to tune in and hear festive music. The drive-through ended with a wave from Santa himself. It was an incredible night of family fun. Glenwood won a grant from SAIC to establish a Lego League club, its first Lego League. This club will be under the skillful guidance of Ms. Ellie Racey. A huge thank you to Mr. Dan Lovegrove, Glenwood PTO President, for his hard work to get this started. Glenwood has established their first-ever spelling bee club. This will be led by Mr. Rick Hendricks and is sponsored by Glenwood PTO. And that's very good news from Glenwood.
Thank you, and again, that's some of the good things that are taking place in our schools. Next is our volunteer recognition. Each month, the Board of Education selects a designee who is volunteering his or her time in one of our schools to recognize them. The good news is we get to recognize hopefully two this month, as we'll be meeting again at the end of the month. And these volunteers, one will be selected toward the end of the school year to represent the Oak Ridge Schools. While I'm thinking about that, Dr. Adams, where are you? We need to be also thinking about a student again for the recognition like we did last year. We don't need that now, but while it just kind of popped into my mind right there, that's something we want to do and get a head start on that if we can do that as well. Thank you. So we'll select a student and one of our volunteers to represent the Oak Ridge Schools and hopefully they'll go on to state recognition. So tonight from Willowbrook, we're going to recognize Mr. Pedro Gonzalez. I would ask Ms. Jen Lauren Dean, principal at Willowbrook, Joe Bruce, who is our Family Resource Coordinator, to come up. She's going to be accepting on his behalf, and Mr. Ben Stevens representing the board. You know, we, they kind of do this sometimes at like the Academy Awards where they say, "accepting on their behalf." So that's, that's you tonight. So if you would, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Mr. Gonzalez is a huge pillar of the Willowbrook volunteer community. He began in the mid-year of 2017. His wife, Terry, is a teaching assistant at Willowbrook. Over the last few years, he has volunteered in the library re-shelving books. He has helped our ELL students and tutored them in math and ELA, and has done an incredible job with those students and really, really helped them learn to love the subjects and just have a love of reading especially. Also, he is such a huge asset to Willowbrook because of our ELL population. He has done such a fantastic job, him and his wife both, Terry Gonzalez, communicating with our families, communicating with our kids, making sure that they are a part of all of the different things that Willowbrook and our district is offering. Mr. Gonzalez could not be here tonight, but we wanted to take this time to let him know what he means to our students and our staff and our community of Willowbrook. On behalf of Mr. Gonzalez, Mrs. Joe Bruce, who has worked very closely with Mr. Gonzalez, would like to say a few words as well.
Pedro couldn't be with us tonight, but he wanted to let you know, he's a very humble person. He just comes because he loves it. And he says that the person and the people who should be standing here are the staff and the students and the parents at our school. He has been just remarkable in all of his years. He retired from the plant. He, he said he lasted like two weeks and then he came to me and said, "I need a job." And he's been with us every, ever since. And what he offers our ELL, not just our children, but our families and our staff and the partnership that he and his wife have built with the community itself is invaluable. And on his behalf, I just want to say thank you to all of you for giving him this honor.
And maybe he's watching, so help me in congratulating him for this. Thank you. Thank you so much. Give him our hearts.
I will definitely do that, sir. Thank you.
So before you all go away, if you'd come back, Holly's not here, I don't think. So let me get, if y'all will get back up there, I'll take a picture.
All of us together?
Yes.
Watch it. No, no. Who do you want? You're right in the middle.
Okay. Just hold what you've got right there and I'm gonna get a couple. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Okay. Our Navy Junior ROTC group got to represent the state of Tennessee in the Veterans Day Parade in that well-known 50th state. Chief Nichols is here. I'm a little disappointed, Chief, that you didn't wear your Hawaiian shirt tonight. And even more so, the board is disappointed that you didn't bring one back for all of us to wear. We would've been proud. Of course, you wouldn't have needed to bring Ms. Agel one. I think Chuck has a hundred or so of them. So Chief is going to give us all the good things that happened while we were there. Chief Nichols?
Thank you guys for having me here. Real quick, if I, if I could, I'd like to, I just got some information yesterday and today. I'd like to recognize a couple things about ROTC that just came to light. We have two Cyber Patriots teams compete this year and one of our teams, led by Cadet Gracea Robo, finished second in the state. And that's, that's pretty awesome. And Sasha Yumansky, who is our cadet commanding officer, she applied for, it was kind of a long shot. She was really, really surprised that she got it, but we're not because she's, she's awesome. But she was one of only 72 JROTC students nationwide that got selected into the Air Force AIM-High Flight Academy. It's a, there are three different sessions. It's a three-week program and she'll, at the end of the camp, she'll, she'll have 15, have earned 15 flight hours. So that's pretty awesome. Again, one of 72 in the nation that got selected for that, and it's right here in Oak Ridge. So just wanted to give them a shout out on that.
That's, that's fantastic.
Yes, sir.
Again, just shows the good things that are coming out of that program.
Absolutely, absolutely. And she's only a junior. That girl's unbelievable. In Hawaii, it was, it was a long time coming. Many of you know, you've bought, you've bought mums, you've bought meat sticks and yard signs and all that other stuff, so just hold on to that. I'll be looking for you all again because we've got something else coming down the road. But again, when we fought, when we started this trip, when I started the program here, was hired, thank, thank you all for hiring me, by the way. In 2017, one of my goals was to do this, this Hawaii trip. It'd be a chance of a lifetime. And I told the students, having the opportunity to be stationed in Hawaii is what kept me in the Navy because I was, I did my four years and I was ready to roll out. But I had the opportunity to get stationed there and I'm like, shoot, that's a dream of my mom's and she never got to do it. So I'd be a fool not to, not to be, not to go to Hawaii. So I re-enlisted and the rest is history. So this was a great opportunity for the kids. We did a ton of fundraising. A lot of the kids did a whole lot more than others, and that's what helped them pay for their trip. That and a little bit of out-of-pocket expenses. So again, some kids were more aggressive with it, the ones that didn't have parents that could, could pay out of pocket. So that's how we, we funded that. We had, did have some corporate sponsors and some, some people and some private citizens and so that was really, really awesome. Our group size was 67. We had 30 cadets currently enrolled. Getting chat rooms for this trip was not a problem. Hindsight 2020, I'd have liked to have left a handful of them at home, but the parents, not the, not the kids, but we had 30 cadets that were currently enrolled in the program. And thanks to you guys, because of the way COVID kind of shuffled it back a year, we, we had seven cadets who graduated in 2021 who stayed onboard and went on the trip with us. And as you can see, this is us in shorts and our, some, some new T-shirts with our, we couldn't go out. The goal was to go to the beach and, and take a nice, maybe a sunset photo with our Santa hats, but 25-year storm, you know, we were in a flood warning and Angie knows and on our bus ride back from the Arizona Memorial, water was coming under the door on the bus. But, so we had to do it in the lobby of the hotel. While we were there, oh, hey, wrong, okay. While we were there, obviously, we went there to march in the, the 80th anniversary of the, the attack on Pearl Harbor, the annual parade. It was at night and it was unbelievable. And this is, this here, the day that we went to the Arizona Memorial, sometimes being a nice guy is not a good thing because we were supposed to go to the Arizona Memorial and the USS Missouri on Saturday. The committee guy said, "Hey, Monday would be a better day because it would be less people." "All right, well, team players, cool, yeah, we'll go." Monday, it rained, small farm animals, okay? But we made it work and the kids, we were able to, to get in there and get a group photo on the Arizona Memorial and it was absolutely amazing. Commander Clem used some of his, his connections and got us a tour of the Navy's newest guided missile destroyer, USS Daniel Anoye, which he was a, he's a Hawaii, was a Hawaiian senator, a Medal of Honor recipient. This was on a Saturday, and this was all in a matter of about, you know, 36 hours that he put this together for us. Keep in mind, this ship was being commissioned three days, three or four days later, the Secretary of the Navy was going to be there, the President, a former President, the Secretary of Defense. So for them to take the time to, to open their, their, their doors and their arms to our cadets was absolutely unbelievable and the kids had a good time with it. So we did hit all the, the cool things. We did go to the pineapple, the Dole Pineapple Plantation. If you see the upper, upper picture there, we, those were some actual ladies who were part of Rosie the Riveter's. They were, they were shipyard builders back during World War II, making a dollar a day and all this other, I mean, it was unbelievable and for them to, to just open their arms and just welcome us and, and it was awesome. The kids were like, "Oh, my God, oh, my God." But it was great. We did hike Diamond Head. Big boy was doing good until we hit the steps and then it was like, "Oh, my God, I gotta get on the Stairmaster a little bit more." But it was awesome, awesome view. If you've never hiked Diamond Head, you gotta do it, okay? We, oh, if you could see right, I don't know where the, the thing is, right there in the center, that's actually Commander Clem on the double-decker bus. Because of the size of our group, we needed the double-decker. Well, you know you're in trouble when they hand you a poncho, a rain poncho, when you get on the bus. No windows. They had, they did have, fortunately have a tarp over the top there. But it was pouring down rain, but it was awesome because as you're, as you're driving past the airport, you're driving under the, the H1, I think it is or whatever. So we're not getting rained on, but it's just raining. You could see it and the kids are up there singing cadence and everything. As soon as we got out from under that, it all changed. Ah, they're screaming and everything. They're getting absolutely soaked. As the bus accelerated and braked, water was just flowing down the steps. It was awesome. But the kids will never forget. They'll remember the trip to Hawaii, but they will never stop talking about the bus ride. Am I right, Mike? This year, we were out, out on a beach one day looking at a surfing contest and actually ran into Jason Momoa, Aquaman. So check his Twitter and Facebook and all that stuff. He's probably saying, "I met Mr. Livace and Chief Nichols on the beach in Hawaii." I don't know. Maybe so, could be. But it was pretty neat. Kids were jealous, okay? Some of the things that we learned that could have been a little bit better was better communication between the committee and us. Sometimes we waited a little bit too long for the, you know, for a bus. We didn't get the right-sized bus, had to take a smaller bus and a little chaser vehicle and stuff like that. I would like to say that the trip was absolutely perfect, but those of you that have ever gone on a trip with kids and with parents, you know that there's always, always some sort of drama. So the next thing that we do, the next trip that we do, we're gonna, we're gonna make sure we vet that a little bit more. So it was a great trip overall. The kids had a lot of fun, had a lot of great memories and so on and so forth. We got back, very little time to rest, already setting our sights on the next big excursion. Talked to Dr. Adams about it and he's like, "Ah," you know, "They need an administrator on the trip," you know what I mean? But we will be routing the paperwork through the proper channels and everything like that. But we have applied for and been selected, been approved by their committee to march in the 80th anniversary of the D-Day, of D-Day, that parade in Normandy, France in 2024. So, you know, here we go again. As I said, hold on to the idea about the, you know, sponsorship and all the other stuff we sell because it's coming. But we do appreciate your support. Is, are, any questions for me? I will shut up if not, I promise. Thank you guys so much. I appreciate it and go Navy and roll Wildcat Roll.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you for all that you do for our kids. Okay, next is our public forum. Public forum is for anyone who would like to address a topic that is not on the agenda. You may address a topic that is on the agenda when it is presented. At that time, please raise your hand to be recognized. If you choose to address the board, you will have three minutes to speak. The board may or may not respond to your comments or may have the superintendent address your concerns. When you speak, please come to the podium and sign in and then state your name and address for the board. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board at this time?
My name is Nathan Wells, 116 Diston. I'd like to follow up with the board. We are currently in another wave of Corona and we are seeing cases go up at our local hospitals. We do have higher increased rates. I know that at my child's school, we are seeing cases show up among children and adults. I know that the state passed a law and that masks were discontinued because of that. I also know that that was brought before a federal judge who put that order on hold. So it is available to go back to masking if we need to. I'd like to know what the plan is and what is the criteria you guys will be considering for that?
Dr. Bortles, or Mr. Lay, you want to kind of give us, that's a good place to give us a little update here where we are.
I can read exactly what we received from our attorney on this matter, so I'm gonna read it right from the email she sent us. And this was in regards to some questions about masks and vaccines. In sum, what this all means is that school systems should adopt and follow the updated Tennessee Department of Health Isolation Guidelines. School systems like the TDAH can recommend that those returning from isolation wear masks and face coverings, but school systems based on Senate Bill 9014 cannot require those returning from isolation to wear masks, face coverings during school. And then, of course, as we've all been made aware, all of this may change once again should the U.S. Supreme Court soon rule to validate OSHA's ETS on vaccines, but we still remain in limbo as to what that issue is, how that's going to be resolved. They're talking about that right now. She goes on to say she's not going to try to predict where all of that's going, but right now, basically, we're in a hold, holding pattern until we get more clarity from the federal government and the state government.
And, and as you may be aware, not, you know, we monitor this, we're monitoring on a daily basis. And you can go to our website and, and track that as well. I'm sure you probably know that.
Yes.
And we are a little, kind of, not a little bit, kind of in limbo to know exactly what legally we can do at this point in time. We are aware of increase and as I've said, we are monitoring that and as soon as we can get some clear direction on what we can do, then we will do what is necessary to provide what should be provided. Ms. Agel?
Well, as Mr. Wells said, it was my understanding that a federal judge did put a stay on that state law that said we are not allowed to mandate masks. So I think under that stay, we are allowed to mandate masks either for those returning from quarantine or for everybody.
Yeah, I'm not going to engage in the conversation, but we've asked our attorney and she has given us the opinion that we cannot do that at this point due to Senate Bill 9014.
Correct. Well, again, I would just like to express my opinion that we need to be very proactive on this. There is new evidence that shows type 1 diabetes is increasing. We know that there is a connection between viral infections and type 1 diabetes. If we have unvaccinated children or their siblings getting exposed and catching COVID-19, we have seen between a 2% and a 30% increase in type 1 diabetic diagnoses in the last year. That is a life-changing diagnosis. It removes at least 30 years off of an adult's life. And we have a duty to our children to keep that in mind and protect them if we are able. I appreciate the board's consideration.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, we will move on next to items for action. Item A is the 2023-2024 District School Calendar. Dr. Bortles?
We have to do the consent agenda?
What'd I forget?
Consent agenda?
Why do I always forget that? And it stares me right in the eye, too. I don't know. I have just something. Well, unless, before we do that, we need to approve the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Eagle. Ms. Eagle, Ms. Agel. Oh, it's gonna be one of, you can tell this is the first time back.
I think so. We're a little rusty.
And I didn't even go on that trip. Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Agel. Any comments? Motion passes unanimously. Now, we're gonna go to that item in regard to the district school calendar. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the 2023-2024 District School Calendar.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchers?
And I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Lay.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Borchers. As you will note, by looking at the 2023-2024 Calendar Committee timeline, we're about six weeks early on this recommendation. This year was just a very quiet year. We did basically determine who would represent each building. We had our first meeting on October the 20th, and then basically, each committee member was charged with going back to their buildings, and whether it be in a staff meeting or by email, basically asking what would, what would our staff, like our committee, to consider as far as options for this calendar. We met again on November the 17th, and we had the fewest suggestions, recommendations that we've ever received in my time in doing this. Basically, we had items such as, one was, can Election Day be virtual? Be a virtual day for students? And the answer is no, because of information that we had received from the Tennessee Department of Education. And someone asked, could we have the full week off of Thanksgiving? And the committee felt that this was not something a lot of people wanted, and that it would further imbalance our two semesters, so we didn't, we decided not to go that direction. It was requested that we move our fall break up a week. That would create a situation where we would not be aligned for one of those weeks with our surrounding counties, and we know that is something that we have been told for many years that our staff would like to have. And then basically, a staff member said, can we work in our rooms during PD days? Well, that's not really a Calendar Committee issue, so, but those were really the four suggestions. So we just didn't get a lot of input this year. We just basically got to this process and felt like that our staff, they're excited about next year's calendar. So this calendar models basically the 22-23 calendar that we will be using next year, which spreads out our PD days throughout the year. And so we went ahead and moved the process up. We did not send out a survey. We felt it was not necessary, and we had two options, option A, option B. And the only difference in option A versus option B was the fact was, did you want more time before Christmas or more time after Christmas, or on December the 25th? And basically, 67% wanted to have more time prior to Christmas Day, and only 32% wanted to have more time after Christmas Day. So calendar A is the recommendation for today. Are there any questions? Sorry, Ms. McLean.
So tell me again why we can't have a virtual day on Election Day?
Basically, because of the COVID a year ago, when so many schools were virtual, there was some information received, actually, I guess it wasn't Department of Education, actually Governor Lee, that we are not permitted to have, to hold virtual instruction. Okay? So there would be a process, and that's just not something we can decide to take a day and make it virtual.
Okay. I've been looking at calendars for a long time, and there's something on this calendar that I have never seen before. The solar eclipse, early dismissal? I'm really impressed that we looked ahead and saw that, and that's pretty cool.
Yes, we would really like it if the solar eclipse would happen earlier in the day, rather than at dismissal time, okay? So we had that conversation, and I'll just tell you, Mr. Goodlaxen, was that the person, right, David? Was it J.D. Goodlaxen that, yes, a few years ago, when we had the eclipse, and it was getting, David is a lifetime Calendar Committee member. Anyway, a few years ago, when we had the eclipse, it was suggested that we consider that, and I promise you, not just me, but the entire committee looked at Mr. Goodlaxen like, "Really? Okay." When it happened, okay, we learned, all right? So anyway, so I think actually it was Mr. Clogdy that mentioned that for this year, and we listened, and we're gonna take the appropriate action on that, so.
Well, we were able to do some really great things on the solar eclipse day with Tracy Beckendorf heading up and a lot of other, other very invested people, but that was because the eclipse was at the right time of day.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, it was a neat opportunity, so. Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hearing no other questions, then please cast your vote on the 23-24 District School Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the addition of a 1.0 FTE Special Education Teacher at Oak Ridge High School. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the 1.0 FTE Special Education Teacher position at Oak Ridge High School.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchers?
And we've had a few changes this year in special education at Oak Ridge High School. We have a teacher that's out on leave, and we also have lost a TA, so we're concerned about meeting those needs of the IEPs at Oak Ridge High School. So as you can see here from Mr. Stoltz, we have a budget-neutral fix for that in this
Comment your questions from the board. Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is FY22 Safety Patrol Washington, D.C. trip. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY22 Safety Patrol Washington, D.C. trip on June 10th through the 13th, 2022.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Dr. Borchers?
You see the memo there from Mr. Ward, and he and Mr. Lay have worked hard on pulling this together, and again, it's a June trip this year, but any questions, I'll ask Mr. Lay to answer some of those.
I don't have a question, just a comment. Back a few years ago, my days at Robertsville in civics, we, the civics classes, took a trip to Washington. And it just so happened that one year we took that trip, that it coincided with the Safety Patrol trip to Washington. I realized that was not ever a good time to go, because not only do you have those that are there normally, there are a lot of Safety Patrol kids. But what was amazing, just to watch the organization of what takes place there is incredible. And I know you've all experienced that, but it really is, and it's in good hands, I think is the point there. And it's a good itinerary. I mean, you keep them busy based on that itinerary. They don't have much free time. Ms. Agel?
I'm just looking through here and haven't found it yet. It's probably in the information. I just haven't found it. But in the event that something happens, COVID goes crazy again, and it's not a good idea to go, is this refundable?
I spoke to Dr. Ward earlier today, and a high percentage of our students, almost 100%, went ahead and picked up the insurance, okay? That way, if they need to cancel because of something in their world or their life, basically, they'll be refunded. Gerber has been excellent. You know, I know that we were a long time getting an agreement, but the refund agreement really was not an issue with Gerber, it was with a hotel chain. And Gerber has worked with that hotel chain, and we finally got a full refund, minus just a few deposits, or minus a few deposits earlier. But they have been good to work with, they are committed. If this trip is canceled because of COVID, they will be willing to reschedule with us, and once again, there could be some small fees that are just not refundable on their part that we may not receive, but in general, we'll get a 90% refund or above, but more than likely, just refund the trip. And that's what is happening this year and next year. We took the refund that we received from them, and basically, we're able to lower the cost for the students this year and next year based on that refund. And then the other thing is, Mr. Philhauer didn't insinuate Gerber, but Dr. Ward does have a history with Gerber. They are just exceptional to work with, and they just do an exceptional job. You know, I listened to Chief talk about communication could have been better. That's not the issue with Gerber, so that's one reason we really wanted to continue our partnership with Gerber, because they do an excellent job.
Any other questions? Motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is a very important item for this board, but even more so, an important item for the names of the people that are on this list that we're going to refer to. And I think some of them are in the audience tonight. I hope you've prepared your three-minute speech that you're required to give. They didn't tell you that, huh? So, Dr. Borchers, the next item is the tenure status for eligible staff members.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of tenure status for the eligible staff members provided on the attachment.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers?
And you're right, Mr. Chairman, this is a big night for, I think we've had 28 people on this list, not all here, but we do have some of our folks here, and for some, been a long time coming with all of the testing, non-testing, so this is a big night for these 28 staff. Well deserved.
I am gonna ask in a minute those who are here to please stand, but we better see if this motion passes before we do that. Just didn't want to put you in a difficult position. So, any comments from the board? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. What I would like to do, and I hope you'll do this for us, those who are on that list that are here, I'd like for you to come to the microphone and just introduce yourself. Some of you we know, and some we may not, and tell us what school you're assigned to, and if you'd do that for us, and then you're free to go, or you can stay if you'd like. So for those who are here, that are on the list, would you do that? Just come on down.
Good evening. I'm Felicia Sharp. I teach at Woodland Second Grade. It's been a wonderful experience, and thank you so much.
And don't go quite away. Just wait till, just stay up here till everybody finishes.
Hi, I'm Amanda Fitch. I teach Second Grade at Glenwood Elementary.
Hello there. I'm Shannon Fox, and I'm a reading specialist at Glenwood Elementary.
Good evening. My name is Dana Turner, and I am the ESL educator at Woodland Elementary.
Please join me in congratulating these individuals. Thank you very much. Next item is the FY21 Audit Report. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY21 Audit.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers?
As the board knows, our auditor could not be here this evening, but has prepared a memo that Ms. Jennifer Van Dyke, our interim finance director, taking over for Ms. Pat Smith, so we're glad that she's here. She's gonna read through that memo so the board can get that information, but also want to take this opportunity just to welcome Ms. Van Dyke to the table over there. She's been great. She's worked very closely with Ms. Smith, and we feel very confident with her in this new role. So with that, Ms. Van Dyke, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. All right, so this is from Terry Moats, our primary auditor. He says, "Dear ladies and gentlemen of the board, I would like to start by thanking you for entrusting Brown Jake &amp; McDaniel, P.C., to perform the audit of the Board of Education for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021. I would also like to thank your accounting department for their assistance and prompt responses to our requests throughout the entire audit process. As part of the audit of the Board of Education's financial statements, Brown Jake &amp; McDaniel, P.C., has issued three reports, and they are as follows. The Independent Auditor's Report on Page 7 of the Financial Reporting Packet. An unmodified opinion was issued by Brown Jake &amp; McDaniel, P.C. The Independent Auditor's Report on Internal Control Over Financial Reporting and on Compliance and Other Matters Based on an Audit of Financial Statements Performed in accordance with Government Auditing Standards on Page 144 of the Financial Reporting Packet. This report contains no opinions, rather is informational only, to the reader of the financial statements. The Independent Auditor's Report on Compliance for Each Major Program and on Internal Control Over Compliance Required by Uniform Guidance on Page 146 of the Financial Reporting Packet. An unmodified opinion was issued by Brown Jake &amp; McDaniel, P.C. I would direct the Board of, the Board to the Management's Discussion and Analysis on Pages 10 through 19 to obtain a summary of certain financial highlights for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021. Lastly, I have drafted and sent over an AU260 letter titled, Communication With Those Charged With Governance, to fully brief the Board on the audit. Once again, thank you for the opportunity to be of service to you for another year. Best regards, Terry Moats." All of that to say, we had no findings.
That's all you really need to say. Questions or comments? Ms. Agel?
To our finance department, thank you very much for another year with no findings.
Ms. McLean?
So it took 159 pages to say there are no findings? Yeah. Thank you.
Right, motion on the floor is approval of that audit. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, item F, is FY22 Budget Transfer Number Three. This is a first reading. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY22 Budget Transfer Number Three.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchers?
Typically, we've done a mid-year spend around this time for the last several years, and this is a much smaller mid-year spend, but I'm gonna highlight a few things that are involved there, and you have it in your attachment. But part of this transfer is for part of the track renovation, to bring all of those funds necessary to meet the bid requirements, a small line for CTE/BEP travel that was funded through BEP, but we just didn't have it allocated as such, building repairs and upgrades for cafeterias, some additional liability insurance for the new track construction and our new Oak Ridge High School storage building that we put up last year, some small termination benefit additions, and then a real rise in diesel fuel costs, so we have a little bit of more funds going into that account. So that's what primarily makes up this transfer.
Any questions? Ms. Agel?
Are we seeing a larger-than-usual number of resignations and retirements?
Not at this point this year. Mr. Bradburn, do you see any difference at this point, at this time of year? Probably will know more come spring, I would imagine.
Motion on the floor in first reading is Budget Transfer Number Three, FY22 Budget. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move to items for information. First is attendance and enrollment reports. Mr. Lay?
Yes, sir. If you compare, once again, our enrollment at this time compared to a year ago, we are up 151 students, which is good. Then if you look at our graphs, we're trending fairly well. We did, I thought we did exceptional early on in our fall, given the spike of COVID. When you look at our attendance, so keep your fingers crossed as we go through these next few weeks.
Any questions from the board on either of those topics? Next is the Finance Report. Are there any questions from the board? Moving on, we move to Items for Discussion. There's one item, and that is the Superintendent's Evaluation. The Board has gone through the evaluation process for the superintendent. Board members have had and will still have the opportunity between now and the next meeting, if they wish to set up a meeting with the superintendent to discuss that evaluation to do so. At the next meeting, our meeting in January, one of the items on the agenda will be approval of the extension of the superintendent's contract. By law, we can extend that contract only for one year, which keeps the balance of a four-year contract in place. And we'll be doing that at that point in time. I have had the opportunity to meet with the superintendent to discuss the evaluation. I think, in my opinion, the superintendent's evaluation was very consistent with the good things that are happening in the Oak Ridge schools. And it should be that way, in my opinion. If his evaluation is good, but things are not happening and progressing in our school, or vice versa, then we've got an issue right there. But they are consistent with that. We also talked about the fact that during our superintendent's tenure, things are not standing still. Staff members and principals know that for sure. We're moving forward to, and I made the comment to the superintendent, our population has changed, we know that. And I alluded back to when I first came to the Oak Ridge Schools as a teacher in 1968, the level that a lot of our students were working at at that point in time. And I alluded to the fact, and I'll probably be off a couple percentages, but if we sometimes use free and reduced lunch percentage as a guide, the free and reduced lunch percentage at Robertsville was between five, 3% to 8%, somewhere in that category. That's not true today. That's saying we still have very capable students. And you hear every meeting, the things that our students are doing. So what that tells me is, we're still providing challenges. We're still offering the help and direction needed for all of our students to be successful. And that's what we want to see in the leadership provided by our superintendent. And our superintendent is providing that leadership to do that. I know Dr. Borchers would be the first to say this, but a good leader is only as successful as those people he or she is surrounded by. And without saying, our staff from our building level to our administrators here at SAB are top-notch. And the things that you're doing and your staff are doing, and the opportunities you're providing reflect that tremendously. So I did say to Dr. Borchers, I really wish there was something I can come in here and say, you know, you're doing not really a good job at this, and you need to pick up the pace a little bit. But I couldn't find anything. And my comment was, you need to keep the ship going in the direction it's going in. That's what we, as a board, ask the superintendent to do. And I appreciate, and I know the board does, the work that you do, the time that you spend, the time that your staff spends in working on things. Being a director or superintendent of schools is not a five-day-a-week, eight-hour-a-day job. It's 365 days a week, 24 hours a day. Particularly when it snows, right, Mr. Lay? Or ice, or rain, or whatever we might have. So thank you, I want to thank you on behalf of the board, and they can speak for themselves. But thank you for the job that you're doing. Appreciate where you are taking the Oak Ridge schools. Anyone else, and you'll have a chance to make comments at our next meeting as well, if you wish to do that. And I would encourage you, if you haven't met, you ought to take the opportunity to do that. It would be a worthwhile conversation. So, with that being said, any old business, new business, communications? I've got a couple of reminders. You saw an email that dealt with the cost differential factor. I did respond, and actually got a response back that our information had been received and would be thus noted. Now, whatever that means, at that level, I don't know. But at least it was noted, and did receive something back. Mr. Clogdney will have me some dates that I will share with you by our next meeting for Focus on Education. I believe Mr. Stevens and I have already checked that box. So that leaves three other board members that need to check it before we start over again. So that'll be forthcoming. If you haven't already, I need to remind the board that before the end of this month, you need to make sure you have filed your Statement of Disclosure. If you don't, that comes with the potential of a $10,000 fine to the school district. Ms. Van Dyke wouldn't like to have to deal with that, I can tell you, so make sure you get that done. Dr. Borchers, you and I talked about this, and let's go ahead. If you would work with Lynn and look at a date for a work session, early March, to do that. On the 12th, that's Wednesday, the Board will be visiting Glenwood at 8:30. On Thursday, some of the Board and staff will be visiting the Board Bradley County Schools to look at a new endeavor they have underway called their PIE Center, which is partners in industry and education within the community. So we're looking forward to that. On Friday, there will, this is really good news, will be the official groundbreaking for the new track at Ben Martin Track. That's Friday at 11 o'clock. Our next board meeting is the 24th of this month. The Board has been invited on the 25th to attend. Do they know we're coming?
They do, yes.
Okay. I didn't want to spring it on them if they didn't know. The Board has been invited to, to listen to the data presentation that is done by the principals. So we're looking forward to that. On the 26th, the Board will be visiting Woodland, starting at 8:45. Looking forward to that. We're going to be relatively busy. As Ms. Webb said earlier, maybe we could work something else in another day or two if we need to. We'll work on that. So I think that takes care of everything that I have. Dr. Borchers, anything else?
No, I think that's, that's a lot this month. Like, as Ms. Webb said, if we did something tomorrow, we'd see each other every day this week.
Yeah, yeah. As Ben and I said, as long as there's food, we're good to go. Yeah. All right, thank each of you for your participation tonight. Thank you for being here. Our new person in the back, Travis, thank you. Waving back there, Dave, thank you. As always, Lynn, thank you for keeping me on target here. I made you get a little buzzer, so I don't skip over the consent agenda that you can flash something up on my screen. So thank everyone, stay safe and stay healthy. We're adjourned.